All right, sorry we're a little bit late getting out of closed session, but here we are, ready to get started. And we will adjourn the special Board of Education closed session at 7:08 and convene the regular Board of Education open session at the same time. Item 2.2 is the pledge. Rob, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Please write.
Please join me. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the roll call show that all board members are present except Mazuhu Cole, who has a health issue. Staff is all present. And our student rep is here. Welcome, Alex. All right, during the closed session, the board took action by a vote of four to zero to release and non-reelect probationary employee ID number AN0728717, teacher assigned to Plymouth Elementary School effective June 8th, 2015. It was motioned by Mr. Hammond, seconded by Mr. Wong, four to zero vote. All right, the order of business. Any changes to the order?
There are. Mr. President, we'd like to move 7.7, Agenda Item 7.7, to follow Agenda Item 3.1.2.
7.7 moves to the position right after 3.1.2, right? Any other changes to the order of business?
We'd also like to pull from consent 8.
We can do that during consent. All right, any other changes to the order of business? Hearing none, we will move on to 2.6 and approve the minutes of February 25th Board of Education regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Wonderful. With that, we will get on to probably our favorite part of the meeting, and that is welcoming and recognizing some of our outstanding students and participants in different activities and some of those folks that help us so much. So first, we're going to recognize and congratulate the Plymouth Elementary School Science Olympiad team on receiving silver medals in a recent competition. And could we have our principal come and tell us about that competition?
Good evening, everyone. I am so pleased to be here tonight to celebrate our fine students and our two teachers who worked very hard to prepare and execute excellence at the LA County Science Olympiad that occurred on February 28th at Occidental College. And these students and their teachers worked very hard for many weeks preparing for these scientific challenges. They had to be able to demonstrate how a catapult would launch tennis balls and know the accuracy of those things. They had to know about different scientists and all of their different biographies and different things about their lives. They had to drop an egg off of a large building and keep their eggs secure. They had many, many challenges. In speaking with Susan Savageo and Jeff Kroll, the two fabulous teachers that helped guide them through this, they told me that the kids would kind of get, you guys would go in there and it was like, okay, you know, we got this competition and you'd go in there and you'd be kind of nervous. And then you'd come out smiling and go, that was really fun and that was really easy. And so because you guys prepared so well and because your teachers prepared you so well, you did an outstanding job. And they all earned silver medals. Let's hear it for our students, our amazing 15 students who participated. And so tonight, and so tonight, we are celebrating them here at the board meeting. And we also have some certificates, I believe, of recognition for your excellent achievement at the Science Olympiad. So when we call your names, please come forward. I'm going to guess that we're going to make a group up here in the front. Does that sound right? Okay. Excellent. So our first student is Phoebe Yee. Come on up, Phoebe. And then Phoebe, just stay standing up here. And parents, feel free to grab a picture. We're going to do a big picture at the end as well. And also Brock Reinhardt. Brock, I don't know if I see you tonight. Brock, are you here? Well, let's hear it for Brock. Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. And we also have Deanna Pham. Let's hear it for Deanna. And Jessica Mitchell. Jessica, come on up. We're also recognizing Jacob Cupp this evening. And Megan Ta. I haven't seen Megan. Nope. Okay, but let's hear it for Megan. We'll make sure she gets that. Marissa Phan. Marissa, are you here tonight? Okay, well, let's hear it for Marissa because she was part of the team. TJ Perez, come on up, TJ. These are great certificates. Fatima Escobar. Fatima, come on up. Michael Bernardino is here for Michael. Michael Ronderis. Michael, come on up. Kalina Pham. Yes, you're not seeing double. Jackie Munoz. Jackie, congratulations. Come on up. And Emily Diebold. I haven't seen Emily. Gabriel Altamorano. Gabriel, come on up. And let me just double check. I think that's all that we have here this evening. And so let's hear it for our Science Olympiad students.
And if the board would join me at the front, we'll congratulate these kids. These certificates say, "Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and congratulates the student's name as a member of the Plymouth Elementary School 2014-15 Science Olympiad Team and recipient of a silver medal." Yeah, come on up.
I also want to just say, our parents that helped support us through this were amazing. This was a day where we were supposed to have just torrential downpour rain. And our parents were there to put up easy ups and make sure the kids had all kinds of snacks and things. And so let's hear it for our dedicated parents because really, they really helped pull this together for us.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Go Dragons! Show those teeth, come on.
Don't be shy. Come on up. You want to take a picture? Get the picture.
Smile. Smile. Smile.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Bring back the camera.
Just take one and email it. Great job, you guys. Cheers. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, we so appreciate the folks that work with these students and all of the work these students put in to make their success. And great job, folks. Item 3.1.1, we want to wish... Oh, we don't want to wish, we wish to congratulate and recognize the accomplishments of the students who participated in the First District PTA Reflections Competition in various categories. And please, Ms. Terossian is going to talk about the reflections. And then Heather, were you going to say a few words about reflections program?
Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. What I'd like to do is actually invite PTA Council President Heather Warren to tell us a little bit about the reflections program. We are so privileged to have as active a PTA as we do. And the work that our students are able to do to enhance their education reflects the strong partnership. And really, there's nobody more capable of eloquently presenting this than Mrs. Warren.
Nothing like being put on the spot. Reflections is a program that is a national program sponsored by the PTA. And it doesn't get enough credit for what it does. And it's a completely voluntary thing. And with arts not having as much time in the schools as we all wish that it did, we have found a way through the PTA to help inspire the kids to keep the arts alive. So whether it's photography, choreography, music, poetry, it's for every realm that you could possibly imagine. So it's really important to Kathy and I, or Dr. Terossian, excuse me, that we keep the children inspired. And we feel that it helps with their academics as well. So she and I have really partnered and pushed for each school to have participants. And this year, we have two handfuls more than we had last year. So we're really, really happy about that. And that's why we want to bring all of you out here and acknowledge the amazing achievements that these children have done this year. So we have some wonderful certificates.
I'll hand you the certificate. And you can give it to the... Gian Lombada. Is Gian here tonight? Let me just read that just real quick. This certificate is in recognition of Gian Lombada. Is awarded this certificate in recognition of reflections, Monrovia Council PTA, this third day of March in the year of 2015. So good job.
Gian received first place for music. And this is from First District. So it's pretty incredible.
All right. Kylie Bush, first place in photography. Kylie, if you would stay up here, we'd appreciate it.
And all of their work, all their visual artwork is outside for all of you to take a look at when we're finished this evening.
Mary Villa Gomez, first place in photography.
That's actually Manny.
Manny.
Okay. We got it wrong on our agenda, Manny. I apologize for that. All right, we have Isabel Olivas Lowell, first place in photography. Okay, I'm better with photography here. Did I give an extra certificate? Nope. Okay. Sofia Loscano, are you here? Nope. Jose Elias Pla de Andad. That's first place in visual arts.
First place in visual arts. Excellent. Can you turn around and face everybody?
All right, congratulations. First place in visual arts, also Alex Hee. Okay, first place in visual arts, Alondra Aguilar. And first place in visual arts, also Savannah Fulker. Now, first place in literature goes to Katrina Swallow. And another first place in literature goes to Daniel Moran. And another first place in literature goes to Micah Muljan.
Maljin.
Maljin. I know that name. Congratulations, Micah. And Micah is also advancing to the state competition in literature. If the board would join me, we'll shake these wonderful students' hands and get some picture opportunities.
Also, none of this would be possible without the PTA Reflections Chair Karen Schultz. Where is she? Karen, I'd like for you to come up and join the team.
We need people to move in? Just Karen, can you scooch this way just a smidge? Thank you so much. That's perfect. Okay. Is it yesterday?
I have to say, there's a variety of phones. A variety of cameras here tonight. That's great. And there's a display of some of this wonderful work in the lobby and some refreshments for those folks. So if you guys want to make your way out to the lobby, then we will move on to 3.1.2. All right, thank you so much. Moving on to item 3.1.2, Board of Education wants to acknowledge and thank some members of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. These folks have helped us so much by being a part of that committee. The requirements of school improvement bonds such as we have here in Monrovia require an oversight committee composed of many different, many different members of the community, parents, business members, that all stakeholders are represented as that bond money is spent for the purpose that it was put on the ballot for. And we so appreciate our Bond Oversight Committee in helping us make sure that money was spent right and continues to be spent correctly. So thanks so much to these three people. They are going off the committee tonight and after their service and then immediately following. We're going to appoint some replacements, but these folks are special folks and we appreciate it. Unfortunately, John Watson couldn't be here tonight, but we want to thank him and recognize him for his membership on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and for his service to the Monrovia Unified School District and the community of Monrovia. Also, Charlotte Chamaudon. Now, I don't know how they let Charlotte get off this committee, but I guess there's certain terms.
I took it down.
Thank you so much, Charlotte.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll at least get one picture with the board.
You look like a first grader.
All right, and Eric Nordahl also could be here tonight. All right. Pam Fitzpatrick is here. She's a member of the board, and I want you to come on up, Pam, and going to be a member of the Oversight Committee. And so...
I'm a member of the PTA. I'm so excited. Thank you. Good seeing you. Thank you. You got a good one coming on.
All right, we do have a good one coming on.
Yeah, you got a good one coming on.
All right, I'm one, two, three, four. I thought it was four. Five.
We agreed to move on to item 7.7 while Pam is still here. I'll keep her all night. She'll have many meetings to attend in the Bond Oversight Committee, so we want to shorten this one as much as we can for her. So we'll move on to item 7.7, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee appointments. And tonight, we'll be appointing three new members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And Pam is one of those. Could I have a motion, please? Second. Dr. Terossian, are you going to say a few words about these folks or Connie Wu?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And as President Gilliland mentioned, that as far as the district has balance for the bond money, and we are required by law to have a bond oversight committee to make sure that the district spends money appropriately and no penny go to the administrative salaries. So our orders show that the district is compliant with the law regulation. We are so glad that Mrs. Pam Fitzpatrick and Judy Schaefer and John Wilson, they are willing to step in to serve the community and continue monitor our bond project. And we are fortunate to have them onboard. I'm pretty sure that the three retired committee members, they were serve the community in another capacity, and we thank them for their service.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
All right, then we'll move on to board member reports. And I will ask Mr. Williams for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Forgive me. Thank you, Mr. Gilliland.
You're welcome.
That's next to you, Mr. Hammond.
I'm not sure whether that's good or bad.
But all sincerely, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Terossian, and KGM for making it possible for our regular Board of Education open session meeting to be broadcast via archive on KGM TV. And if you didn't know, our board meeting for February 11th is being shown now with a backup of six meetings to be followed. And of course, it takes $48 for our meetings to be uploaded for view on KGM. Also, I wanted to share as a liaison that our board meetings also will be live streamed soon, which KGM is working with the district. And of course, our chief technology expert, tech master, Mr. Jason Buchanan and his staff for proper equipment for live feed. Now personally, my neighbors in the unincorporated area of Monrovia are really excited and now can witness the meetings, the agenda items, especially those students who reside at Plymouth and Santa Fe. So that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. This district is known as scholars and champions. And fortunately, we were lucky enough to see some silver medalists from Plymouth come up today. And at the same time, I'd like to make sure that everybody knows we also have some CIF soccer champions, which is the first time that the school has accomplished that feat. And as a matter of fact, they are doing very well in the state competition. They won their game yesterday. And tomorrow, they will be playing at Cathedral High in downtown Los Angeles. And if they are fortunate enough to win that game, they play for the championship. So this is quite an accomplishment for the team and just another notch in the belt of Monrovia CIF championships.
Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. I'd like to thank Terrence Williams. The report he gave is understated in what it accomplishes. His steadfastness and dogged determination to make sure that the entire segment of the population was informed about the events that were happening in this school district of which their children attend to. I want to thank you for that. Ever since you got here, this has been a burr under your saddle to get it done. And the wheels move slowly, but the wheels do move. And your evidence of that, and congratulations to you for a job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
I would like to second what Rob just said. Terrence, you've been a great liaison to that group and got that done. We appreciate it. Also, want to add my congratulations to Mr. Wong for the first boys soccer CIF championship brought into Monrovia High School by our boys soccer team. And what a great job they've done. Unfortunately, I had to miss the first state playoff game because of a flood in my house. And it's like, I was telling the guy, hurry up and get done. But I missed the whole thing. But I read in the paper this morning, they did a wonderful job. And they'll be moving on to another game tomorrow afternoon at Cathedral. And I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder here. I don't believe so. But those of you that can come out to Cathedral tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, it's right across from Dodger Stadium. It's not that hard to get to. So come out and 3:00, I'm being told now. It's been changed to 3:00. Wow, I have to get on the goal line a little sooner. They tell me you can take the goal line right down to Chinatown and walk about seven blocks and be at Cathedral. So half mile, I say. Not...
Mr. Gilliland...
I'm glad if I remember there too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I hope, I hope Monrovia turns out in number there tomorrow afternoon to support these guys in this state tournament.
Forgive me to interrupt. I just wanted to say, because Mr. Wong is so modest, his son is one of the superstars on the team. And so obviously, he has a keen sight on the game. But congratulations, as a father of one superstar on the football team.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I feel your fun.
You can just see Brian's pride, that's when you're out there at the game. The other thing I'd like to mention tonight is the Monrovia Reads fundraiser that was held last week. What a great fundraising event that is. And so many folks attend that and are, you know, open their pocketbooks to help support Monrovia Reads, which works hand in hand with the city, with the chamber, and with this district to help promote literacy and encourage literacy and assist in literacy programs across this community. And we appreciate those folks that put that on and do all that work. Thank you for what you do. And it was great to be at that and watch those funds being raised for the literacy program here in Monrovia. All right, with that, I will move on to item 3.3 and have our student representative.
Thank you. Kenny Nokes and Matten Park have had a wonderful last few weeks. We just wrapped up the first semester of our second term, and students are finishing exams and are getting ready and excited as we get closer to graduation. Our basketball team finished first in our division, and we've now started softball season where we won our first game eight to seven. We want to make sure to invite everyone to our open house on St. Patrick's Day, March 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliland, I'd like to thank Terrence Williams, the, the report he gave is understated in what it accomplishes. His steadfastness and dogged determination to make sure that the entire segment of the population was informed. About the events that were happening in this school district of which their children attend to. I want to thank you for that. It, you, ever since you got here, this has been a burr under your saddle to get it done. And the wheels move slowly, but the wheels do move and your evidence of that and congratulations to you for a job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
I would like to second what Rob just said, Terrence, you've been a great liaison to that group and, and got that done, we appreciate it. Also want to add my congratulations to Mr. Wong for the. First Boys Soccer CIF Championship brought into Monrovia High School by our boys soccer team and what a great job they've done. Unfortunately, I had to miss the first state playoff game because of a flood in my house. And it's like, I was telling the guy, hurry up and get done, but I missed the whole thing. But I read in the paper this morning, they did a wonderful job and they'll be moving on to another game tomorrow afternoon at Cathedral. And I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder here, I don't believe so. But those of you that can come out to Cathedral tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, it's right across from Dodger Stadium, it's not that hard to get to. So come out and three o'clock, I'm being told now, it's been changed to three o'clock. Wow, I have to get on the goal line a little sooner, they tell me you can take the goal line right down to Chinatown and walk about seven blocks and be at Cathedral. So half mile, I say, not. Mr. Gilliland. If I remember there too, so I hope, I hope Monrovia turns out in number there tomorrow afternoon to support these guys in this state tournament.
Forgive me interrupt, I just wanted to say, because Mr. Wong is so modest, his son is one of the superstars on the team. And so obviously he has a keen sight on the game, but congratulations, as a father of one superstar on the football team.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I feel your, your fun.
You can just see Brian's pride, that's when you're out there at the game. The other thing I'd like to mention tonight is the Monrovia Reads fundraiser that was held last week, what a great fundraising event that is. And so many folks attend that and are, you know, open their pocketbooks to help support Monrovia Reads. Which works hand in hand with the city, with the chamber and with this district to help promote literacy and, and encourage literacy. And assist in literacy programs across this community. And we appreciate those folks that put that on and do all that work. And thank you for what you do and it was great to be at that and watch that, those funds being raised for the literacy program here in Monrovia. All right, with that, I will move on to item 3.3 and have our student representative.
Thank you, Kenny Nokes and Matten Park have had a wonderful last few weeks. We just wrapped up the first semester of our second term and students are finishing exams and are getting ready and excited as we get closer to graduation. Our basketball team finished first in our division and we've now started softball season where we won our first game eight to seven. We want to make sure to invite everyone to our open house on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. Mr. Rosenstein will be cooking his famous hot dogs. And we'll be spotlighting our career technical pathways that are offered at Mountain Park Campus. And the four featured pathways are arts, media, entertainment, health and medical careers, performing arts and construction engineering. And we hope to see you guys there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland, appreciate that, appreciate having you here. All right, we'll move on to item 3.4, the report from Superintendent Throsen.
I've actually have a couple of people reporting, experts in their field. The first is Jennifer Arnt, who I'd like to invite up to the podium. To give us a brief report of the goal line and its impact in our community.
All right, well, good afternoon, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Jennifer Arnt and I am with Transit Safety Programs for Metro. And what my job is or what the unit, our unit does is that we prepare the communities for when we have projects such as Foothill coming up. So we work with the communities within a 1.5 mile distance of both sides of the tracks. So to get started, let me make sure, yes, okay. So our purpose for Transit Safety Programs' goal is to raise public awareness for residents on how to live and work safely around trains and tracks. We try to create a permanent safety impression within the community itself. So a little bit of factoids about the goal line, again, it's gonna, we're gonna have six new stations, it's gonna be 11 and a half miles. It's projected to open 2016, we, our trains will be traveling 55 miles per hour. And there will be 200 trains passing on a daily basis. And each station will have parking located there. So as far as our timeline, again, we work with the entire community. After being, working with the school district though, they have asked me to present here tonight and focus, what is the focus for the schools? So this past January and February, I have spoken to all superintendents for the schools that were passing, or the communities that were passing through. Again, our outreach is within the one and a half mile of the alignment on both sides. For this year, starting this month through the end of the school year, we will be focusing on those schools that are within a 0.5 mile radius of the alignment. We'll be also presenting to parent groups and participating in school events such as Career Day, Back to School Nights, things like that. Is where we'll have a resource table to talk to faculty, faculty, students and staff, as well as parents, caregivers. To make sure they understand what's happening and preparing them for the, our outreach on safety. Then starting August through the end of the year, again, we're gonna then go back, retrain those schools within the 0.5 mile radius. As well as the others within the one mile radius for that one and a half mile of the alignment. We're also gonna be canvassing the community and what I mean by that is reinforcing with safety messages such as having a door hanger distributions. Working with the local newspapers, having our safety tips out there. The presentation itself is station specific. So that way students and the community understand exactly what we're talking about because it's right in their own backyard. So everything that we are showing within the classrooms and showing at our presentations are site specific. So the students and faculty and staff understand. We also have orientation tours, so once we open, like I said, it's projected for 2016, we will invite all the schools that are within that 1.5 mile radius. There would be a safety docent that would meet them at the school, escort the classrooms, each classroom to the actual closest nearest station to them. And give them a hands-on overview. So within that, we're talking about platform safety, what to do in case of emergency, using the call boxes. And using the ticket vending machines, it's just a basic overview of that station and the system itself. They'll go one stop and then return back and walk the students back to the school. And that is an option for all schools, so it's not required, it's just that we do have that option. Then the following year, once we are open, we do stay the life of the line. So my team, it is an annual ongoing basis that we work with the schools within that one and a half mile as well as the community. So in case we have students that are moving into the community during the middle of the year or as they come in. We're just making sure that it's, it's an ongoing effort to just remind people on how to be safe around the trains and how to use it. But also empower them and teach them the tools to use and how to connect within LA because now they're gonna, you're gonna have this line coming out to the community. And with that said, I would take any comments or questions regarding the Foothill Project.
I have a couple of questions about how, how you outreach at opening. And I would hope that Metro has some folks, particularly at Santa Fe, because Santa Fe is not a half mile, it's across the street from our station.
Exactly.
And, and so I would hope you have some folks there the first few days that the trains are running, along with our folks. To observe and see if there are any situations that need to be adjusted.
I'm glad you brought that up, one of the things that Metro does, and I, I guess due to time restrictions, I didn't talk about it. But we do have something called our Safety Ambassadors. So these Safety Ambassadors are out there six months prior to opening and six months after opening. And they are basically our eyes and ears of the community. So they will be placed at strategic locations that we'll look at, Santa Fe is actually one of the crossings that we will be putting typically an ambassador at. And though they're again morning and afternoon, and like I said, they're the eyes and ears. So in case we're having students playing chicken with the train, crossing, we know things like this happen because we've experienced it. So again, that's what we're out there for, so working very closely with the school principals themselves and faculty. And understanding what's happening and just working, like I said, those ambassadors are our ears and eyes of the community to let us know what's happening.
And I would assume before school opening next fall, you would also have an outreach effort and.
Yes, so like I said, this year we're focusing on those schools 0.5. And then next year, we're gonna be focusing on those, the 0.5 plus that one mile radius, so yeah. And another thing I didn't mention, I forgot to mention, is that because there hasn't been a train passing through here for many, many years. One of the things that a lot of the school district are asking, and this school district is one of them, is that I outreach to all the schools, not just that 1.5 mile radius. So we are definitely, I am honoring that and we will be outreach into all the schools.
We appreciate that and we appreciate your emphasis on Santa Fe being right across the street and keeping an eye on that. Both the remainder of this year and next, well.
Yeah, and like I said, it will be an ongoing effort, like I said, we, complacency is a major thing. And we don't want the students getting used to having that train and so again, my team goes in there and just reminds everybody. Right before, you know, summer starts, the kids are out there on their own and we just want to always have that safety at the forefront.
Right, and I said this year, meaning 2015, 16 school year and second half, and then the start of the 2016, 17 school year. Appreciate it and looking forward to the goal line being up and operating, any other questions or comment?
Yeah, I do, a couple, what is the number of cars that are projected to be built in the parking structure?
For, it depends, there, it varies, right now it is 250, each lot is different, but the 250 is for the parking structure itself is.
That's one, that's the one right across the street from Santa Fe?
That's the, let's see.
The one on DeWorty Road?
Monrovia Station, yes, so I believe it's 250, I don't wanna, I need to look back at the records, but I could get back to you on that.
And what are the ridership projections that, for that station?
Right now, I, again, that's, it's more operations, we are the ones, like I said, doing the campaign, the rollout of the safety. So questions like that, I could get with operations and I could get back with you on that.
They are safety related, that's what I'm trying to find out. Because depending on what the ridership projections are, the time of day that those projections for ridership is. When school is coming in the morning, or coming in session in the morning and releasing in the afternoon. We have approximately 45 to 60 minute problem. That could be exacerbated by, depending on what the ridership projections are for the time. As people are coming into school and being released from school with respect to trains and automobiles entering onto DeWorty Road.
I got you.
And what I'm gonna ask for is I'd like to see a traffic study. I believe that DeWorty and Myrtle Avenue are A-rated intersections. And I would like to have a traffic study prior to the opening of the goal line. And I'd like to see one six months after the opening of the goal line to see if it's changed.
Okay, I could, like I said, I could definitely take that back to operations and get back with you.
Thank you.
But it's DeWorty and Myrtle, correct?
DeWorty and Myrtle, actually, I'd like to see Magnolia and DeWorty as well. That's controlled, that's controlled by a signal.
Mr. Williams?
I have a follow-up to Mr. Hammond and Mr. Gilliland's comments, first, Mr. Gilliland, with regards to your outreach efforts. Present to the parent groups, have you considered a late night, sevenish, 7:30 outreach effort?
Oh, yay.
At the Santa Fe Middle School?
Yes, like I said, the parent centers, I mean, resource centers, that's one thing that we do try, it's early morning and typically when, sometimes that they meet and then late afternoon. So it's not just nine to five, we, like I said, are constantly continually out there, what works best with the schools and when they think the best presence would be there, that's when we will work with them.
Okay, and with regards to Mr. Hammond's comments, he's right on, have you considered safety measures with regard to crossing guards? Because that's pretty saturated in the mornings with a train, a school, parents dropping kids off. I'm certainly, that's not gonna be forwarded to the city of the, of the school district. Have you considered that, because Mr. Hammond's right on, with regards to that DeWorty Road, that's gonna be so saturated, especially adjacent to the garage. So it seems like it would warrant some type of security measures.
Yeah, in regards to crossing guards, in the past with other openings that we've had, we have, it's actually come from the school district itself. Where they are the ones who put the crossing guards at the loca, at the locations. We will put, like I said, the Safety Ambassadors out there six months prior and then six months after. But as far as the crossing guard itself, that would be something that the school district would have to look at. Once opening and if they feel there's a need for it, possibly putting the crossing guard there.
What's considered a Safety Ambassador?
A Safety Ambassador is actually a retired Metro rail operator or bus operator that's worked for Metro. So they have had the experience and gone through training on behalf of Metro. So they have been a Metro employee, they've retired, and now they're coming back to be a Metro Ambassador.
Okay, so what duties does this ambassador, what duties does it detail?
Basically, like I said, they are the eyes and ears of the community, but an example of this would be at the crosswalk. So if there is a student or a pedestrian crossing and they're jaywalking, the hands crossing and they're going against the light. Typically, they would have a whistle, they would blow the whistle, try to call that person back. And not reprimand them, but talk to them and educate them why what they're doing is wrong. Again, if there is an issue where gates are down at a crossing, a grade crossing, they're going around the gate, pedestrian or someone in the vehicle. It's a little different to blow the whistle and stop the vehicle, but the pedestrian, again, blowing the whistle, calling them back and letting them know, but trying to stop them not to go around the gate. Those, those are the duties of our Safety Ambassadors.
So I understand you're right that resources on behalf of the Metro rail would come from the district?
No, this, for, there was an inner, a crossing as far as an intersection at the, at, say if it was Myrtle and DeWorty. That would actually be some, a study that the school district would do if they wanted, our, like I said, our ambassadors are different. But we wouldn't, not, I guess, it wouldn't come from us as far as the actual crossing guard being there.
Terrence, I can fill in the blank here, here's what happens, right now, there's the Goal Line Construction Authority that has control over this project. As soon as they're through building it, they transfer it and Metro accepts it. Metro is the operator of the line, the Goal Line Construction Authority will cease to exist as an entity. And then it becomes part of the Metropolitan Transit Association of Los Angeles County. These folks here are employees, they're probably temporary employees of Metro that come out on a project and kind of get people used to the project. And then they step away. But what happens is, and you can do this and we can do this as a board, we can start petitioning Metro to get things for this thing in perpetuity. Metro is a $3 billion dollar a year behemoth, okay, billion with a B.
Yeah.
And when things like this pop up, we can certainly petition them, we can use our representatives, we have John Fassana, who is the council member in DeWorty. Who sits on that board as a voting board member, we can also use our county supervisor as an advocate. Generally speaking, anything that would prevent a lawsuit, Metro is all over that. Because it's cheaper to be preventative than it is to be reactive. So I would encourage us as a board to start asking for things that we may need in perpetuity so that we don't have to expend that from our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond, we're on the same page.
I, I had one more request, I understand what your role is here. But going on the same line, as you can imagine, safety is clearly one of our cornerstone issues here. And that is, I want to know if we can get the proposed schedule of the trains coming through. I, I can't imagine a worse situation of having the train stop right at the same time that classes are starting. This is when people are rushing both directions, both to get to the train and to get to the classroom. So if we can get the spacing or the time of the stops to coincide so it has the least amount of last minute people going to either spot. I think that's gonna help us quite a bit and at the same time, I think it'll help when we're doing our planning. If, if our bus drivers know when trains are gonna be coming through and we can get our timing down as well. I'm not sure if that information has been completed yet, or even what the spacings are. But I would greatly appreciate if we could get a schedule or even a tentative schedule so we can try to integrate that with our internal studies. So hopefully again to minimize any potential congestion.
And following up on Brian, what is the projected headways?
Right now, it's as nor, as what we have right now, it's every 12 to 15 minutes.
Okay, headways are the amount of times that train will go through that intersection in its frequency. So those gates will be down every 12 to 15 minutes, that's a lot, okay? That's because, well, the maintenance chart is there, the 200, the 200 trips is all the cars that are on the line have to come in during the day. Or during the month for service, so everything, no matter where it is on the line, has to come through Monrovia to get to the, the, the maintenance facility. Most of that will be done at night, it won't be during the daytime, but you bring up a very good point, if we're having 12 to 15 minute headways, we need to know what that is.
Well, exactly, and I'm thinking that, again, you know, we understand what the reality of having the train come through is. But there's gonna be two main points and sometimes those days are going to change. Obviously, as school schedules change, but we'll know what those are ahead of time. So if that means that instead of having a 15 minute leeway, perhaps we have a 20 minute leeway at that one particular junction when people are coming in and coming out. The amount of problems that that would solve would, I think would be dramatic. That's all, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks so much for being here today, that's, that's a good update and certainly safety for the Metro line has been foremost in our thoughts as that construction goes on.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to Dr. Throsen.
And our second expert today is Dr. Darvin Jackson here to brief, I guess, a brief presentation on his expert dissertation on sheltered instruction.
I'm gonna try to give you guys the condensed version of my dissertation defense that I conducted two Wednesdays ago. So as it comes up, again, board, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present. My findings and dissertations for you UCLA Bruins, I'm sorry. I had to do it to you. But allowing me to present my research and findings over the past three years. Which focused on the degree to which the use of sheltered instructional strategies in classrooms impacts student access to the Common Core content. As a consequence of professional development, with a specific focus on English language learners. So this will be a brief agenda, I will not overwhelm you with 30 minutes of presentation, as I said, I've condensed that agenda. So with that said, let's move right into our background of the problem. As we've moved into the Common Core state standards, we know that they were developed in an effort that national standards would be shared. Ensuring that students in every state are held to the same level of expectation and to the same level in the world's highest performing countries, that also includes an emphasis. That also includes an emphasis on writing and discourse. And as I was talking to Dr. Kaiser just before I came to the podium, I was saying that the other challenge is focusing on how we're going to be able to incorporate in preparing our teachers for the writing piece that they need to disseminate to our students. In conjunction with that, that means that teachers will have to transition from then teaching solely the content they enjoy to the content that students actually need. And so we need to then understand the historical aspect of where bilingual education was to where we are actually today. And so I'm going to focus on briefly the political, legal, and accountability reform issues which were essential to the study of English language learners. So if we go back to 1906, there was the Nationality Act in Texas, and it's going to be interesting because it's going to cycle back through 100-plus years later where there was a focus simply on English being taught solely in our schools. And then there was the Burnett Act, which interestingly enough, in order to become a citizen, if you were immigrating, to become a citizen, you had to pass a literacy test in English. And if you did not, you were not admitted to the United States. So 50 years or so later, you had the Civil Rights Act of 1964, combined with the Bilingual Education Act of 68, and then Lau versus Nichols in 1974, which allowed Chinese immigrants in San Francisco to have access to bilingual education. So though, that, those 10 years, there was an opportunity for us to really start focusing on closing the achieving gap, knowing that we had 50 years prior to that where we didn't, we weren't valuing our native language of English language learners and then their second language. And so then that moves into 1994, you guys are around and know you were, Prop 187, which ultimately limited the rights and benefits of immigrants and undocumented immigrants of being able to attend our schools. And then you had Prop 227, which ultimately circled back to 1906, and the Nationality Act, which limited English only again in our classrooms. And then to actually round it out with the assessment reform movement and the No Child Left Behind in 2002 with the focus on requiring all students to be proficient with implementation in 2002 and concluding in 2014, becoming proficient. And as we know, to date, students did not meet that mark in 2014, of all students becoming proficient in English. So I think I've kind of given you the background on the statement of the problem. This, the research that I actually conducted, I was able to actually conduct here in the Monrovia Unified School District at Monrovia High School. So these numbers are relevant to our students here. So you see the gap of our, our non-English language learner students achieved 67% on the California standardized test when that was in effect versus 7%. And these are data, this is data from 2002. I will say that between 2011 and 2013, with the emphasis on instructional strategies that were implemented at Monrovia High School, our English language learners achieved 136 point gain over that three-year period. Yet and still, the gap itself still remains a problem. So you see the second quote there by Lynda Darling-Hammond, I love it. "No matter what content area they are teaching, teachers must understand language learning and literacy development, which are at the heart of learning processes for all students, especially English language learners, who must learn how to communicate in English while they are simultaneously learning content." And so one other citation I'd like to share is from a gentleman named Bude, which basically asserted that teachers who are provided with quality professional development are more active in teaching that in turn leads to higher student achievement. And so that's going to transition right into my purpose of my study then. Simply was to assess professional development programs that develop English language learner teachers with instructional strategies that develop access, depth, and breadth of knowledge to the Common Core state standards for beginner to intermediate EL students via the Sheltered Instruction Observational Protocol. And at Monrovia High School, all teachers have English language learners in their classrooms across the campus. And so what a SIOP ultimately is a framework for good instruction. And the teachers that participated from Monrovia High School clearly articulated, articulated that throughout. There are eight components, lesson planning, building on a student's background, knowledge, and experience. Comprehensive input is simply how teachers are actually articulating the pace of that communication to their students. Practice, that gradual guided, guided release, gradual release, I should say, guided practice, gradual release, sorry. Fostering interaction, so whether students are in groups of two, three, and four, it takes us back to fostering the discourse component. And then application, what am I going to do with that knowledge? Lesson delivery just simply focuses on, did I meet the intended goals of the particular lesson that I'm teaching? And then finally, you can't have a good lesson without review and assessment of it and then providing feedback to the students. One of the other citations I'd like to highlight here that's not shown is by Joyceon Showers that basically says, "Studies have shown it takes, on average, of 20 instances of practice before a teacher has mastered a new skill," with the number increasing with the complexity of the skill. So analogous with a musician, an athlete, or what have you, as a beginner, you practice a particular skill, and we know it takes time to develop that skill over time. And so same rings true for a teacher. In order to become a successful teacher at that particular skill, you have to stick with the particular skill that you're implementing over the course of time versus what teach, some teachers may tend to do is they attend a professional development, they go into the classroom, they try the instructional strategy for a classroom, class session or two, and then it becomes trying, and so then they revert back to what they know. So they need to stick with that 15 to 20 before they really will start seeing successes with that. So the questions that led my research study, to what degree does the use of SIOP instructional strategies in classrooms have an impact on student access to the core content as a consequence of professional development? And then my second question was what resources are required to provide teachers with effective implementation of SIOP PD to support the transition? And we looked at time, physical support, as well as teacher support via mentors or teacher coaches. In addition, with question two, being that there were 12 participants in this study, I created two separate groups. I had a group of six that were my control group, and then a group of six that were my pilot group. And the pilot group, ultimately, going back to that citation I mentioned, about 15 to 20 instances of repetition, that pilot group set a goal for themselves over the course of the time that I was observing them, to really focus on implementing those strategies that were presented in a professional development, which you're going to see a graphic organizer to explain that. Okay, so my theoretical framework simply is this, effective lesson planning, literacy development, incorporating a focus on discourse, writing, building on background knowledge equals student achievement. So what does the literature say? There were proponents for, there are proponents against. Proponents against believe that the use of native language delays the acquisition of English and that it is more efficient to place students in all English programs where they may receive language support. Whereas additional studies show that providing instruction in the student's native language does not only facilitate English acquisition, but also strengthens content knowledge attainment. And so you think of Monroe and our dual immersion program that we have, and how our students are actually excelling there. A few more pieces of literature that I'd like to share, students who do not come to school with primary language proficiency have to achieve one and a half to two years gain each year to close the gap between them and their native speakers. So that ultimately means within, in that one year, there's a significant amount of that gap that has to be closed. So how do we do that? Again, it goes back to developing literacy in their native language as well as in their second language. So how do we do that? Teachers incorporating into their lesson plan for phase of instruction, modeling, guided practice, collaboration, independent learning, which then connects back and correlates to SIOP. So my methodology, you've seen the research problem, a few pieces of the literature, the purpose of the research. I then focused on collecting some data. The data came from the 24 interviews that I conducted, as well as the 24 observations would ultimately will lead to the research findings, and I'm about three minutes away from those. So my 12 study participants, six control group participants and six pilot group participants. Pretty much, they participated in all of the same aspects of the study. They went through the first interview, answered 11 questions centered around instruction. They then attended a SIOP professional development, which was led by one of the teacher experts at Monrovia High School, as well as one of the instructional coaches here in the district. The only difference that I highlighted just previously was that the control group did not establish a goal. They attended the professional development and then left that professional development with the hope of potentially innately establishing a goal, but not necessarily met a cognitively establishing a goal, which is what the pilot group actually did, where they actually wrote down the goal that they were going to establish of 15 to 20 repetitions with the particular instructional strategies that were presented. Followed by an observation, two to three weeks later, a second observation by the researcher, and then a final interview, which concluded the study of seven questions. So what were my findings? Question number one, again, to what degree does the use of SIOP instructional strategies in classrooms have an impact on student access? And so you see, lesson preparation is key. You can't create a lesson driving in your car to school and expect for it to be successful. Building on the student's background knowledge and then the use of variety of instructional strategies were identified as the most frequently used components of SIOP, and these are specific comments from the teachers that were involved in the study. Lesson preparation and building background knowledge were identified as garnering increased student achievements, which correlated to the literature that was studied historically. And then finally, group projects, written assignments, and class discussions were most frequently used by participants, which again correlates to the writing and the discourse that needs to be fostered to be successful in the Common Core. My second question, what resources are required to provide teachers with effective implementation of SIOP? And so goal setting for both teachers and students was reported as having increased importance as they transitioned. So many teachers indicated prior to the study that they didn't necessarily think of setting goals for both themselves and students. They had the learning objective, but they didn't drill deeper with that. So the thought process was then specifically for students, having them starting to own their own responsibility in, in their, in their learning. Peer collaboration time, follow-up professional development, and materials or curriculum are essential. And then frequent professional developments are necessary to implement SIOP with fidelity. So my implications and recommendations as a wrap-up. It's essential to focus on the frequency of professional development. I think our teachers here, even our parents, know that here in Monrovia Unified, we have amped up our professional development. Thank you to Dr. Therosian and Dr. Kaiser, but we know we're going to be making some adjustments on that as well. Providing opportunities for significant writing and discourse, as I said already, is in line with the Common Core. Establishing teacher-student self-directed goals based on formative and summative assessments. And then inclusive of the eight SIOP elements, focusing on lesson preparation and building background knowledge are essential cornerstones to providing access to students. And that is my presentation on my dissertation, three years. Thank you.
So that's all you have to do for a PhD is work yourself to death for two years. Very nice. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for?
Yeah, for the most important question. So what now? How does this impact what we do here in Monrovia? What is going to change or what has changed?
Well, I think one of the, as I, as I prefaced in talking to Dr. Kaiser, one of the challenges will be to find how we start incorporating. We've actually already started incorporating that focus on writing. I think the larger challenge, the macro problem though, is, is how you are preparing new teachers coming into the fold for those challenges of writing and fostering a discourse, not just in English, but across the curriculums. Even more challenging, I was a math teacher, and so many math teachers will say, I didn't go to school to be an English teacher and to teach writing. So how do I, how do I make that shift? We're all adults, we've, we learned how to write, but how do we make that shift as educators to be able to teach those two main components going forward?
And how are we going to do that?
Very methodically, and I think, as I said here, with frequent PDs, and that, that involves bringing in experts from the outside, which I think we're already, I know we're already doing. And then you grow your people from within and you, you continue to build capacity from within your organization.
Great.
Thank you.
I just have one question, which-
Yeah, great for a USC guy.
Which I think a lot of people ask, and that is, these strategies and all this professional development, and your, your study really keyed on the English language learner. But I believe that we've found these kinds of strategies, as we've done dual immersion and other things, we've found these kinds of teaching strategies are good for all students and improve all student performance. Is that a correct understanding?
That's a correct understanding. And it, to reiterate, the 12 participants that were in this study ultimately said that this is SIOP, SADIE, they are essentially great instructional strategies for all students. So.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. We really are fortunate to have somebody willing to commit the time and have an action research project within our school, and even more fortunate to have 12 teachers willing to spend the time and work on it. Just, it helped students, it helps with achievement, and the impact to our schools will have a ripple effect. So we will be working on that plan. I do have one additional item that I'd like to bring as part of my report, and that is Godspell the Musical is at Monrovia High School, and I am looking forward to seeing it. It is either this Friday or this Saturday, or your opportunities to see it.
Thank you for mentioning that. I intended to in my report, but our drama department does such a great job, and I hope the community gets out to support them and see this, this performance. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 3.5, public comments for items not on the agenda. We encourage public participation, invite you to share your views on school business. If you would like to share that, please complete the form and give it to Ms. Marakanda here. Do we have any comment cards for items not on the agenda?
Yes, we do, Mr. President.
All right.
Susan Hirsch.
Susan.
It's my pleasure to address the board this evening and our families at home, and remind everyone that this month in our community is March for Balance. And although the subject of this month-long focus is one that we'd probably rather not talk about, I'm proud to be in a community and a school district that has the courage to step up and face this and not only talk about it, but find solutions to some problems that we've had in the community. And we're not isolated in this. This is a national- This is a national issue, and that is of youth, children and youth suicide. So our focus in March for Balance is all about looking for signs of depression, the causes of that, and gaining some of the tools. It's March for Balance Outreach and Education Campaign, and during this month, several of us in the community and the school district are meeting with several different groups, adult groups, youth groups, all around the community, to provide information and tools so that this nightmare doesn't have to stay in the closet. I think as humans, we tend to not want to even look at those issues that are nightmares that we fear, and death is one of those. If we talk about death, in the best-case scenario, someone who has lived a long fruitful life, it's hard to say goodbye at that point. If someone is taken from us from an accident or an illness earlier than we think they should have been, that's even more difficult to deal with. But when it becomes a choice to take your own life, it becomes horrific. And as I said, I'm proud that we're in a school district and a community that takes this seriously. We're known for addressing our issues, facing them, and finding solutions. One of the solutions that we have, we have two events coming up, and I want to remind all of our families that we have a parent academy on Saturday, March 21st, at Monrovia High School. This academy is sponsored by our school district, supported by our board members, and we have a wonderful agenda. We have our keynote speaker, Pastor Albert Tate, who, if you haven't heard him speak, it's worth the event just to hear him speak. That's followed by two very powerful workshops, one presented by our police department about community and campus safety, and one by our own school district focusing on those signs of depression and giving some tools to help prevent suicide. It is a preventable situation. We also have a panel of experts that are going to receive questions from our participants, from our families, so that they get immediate feedback to any questions they may have, and a resource fair. That resource fair is half mental health providers and half activities from our school, from our community, because we believe that children and youth and families that are engaged in positive activities have a better chance of having a positive life. So we invite you again Saturday, March 21st, at Monrovia High School, 8:30 to 12:30. Again, we have the culminating rally following that, the next Thursday, March 26th, in Library Park, where we will again have a resource fair. So I appreciate the time to share this again and hope to see all the families come out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Are there other speaker cards?
There are not.
Not having any, we will move on to item 3.5.1, public comment for items on the open session agenda. Are there any speaker cards for this?
There are not, Mr. President.
All right. Not having any, we will move to the consent agenda. I would like to pull 6.6. We're also pulling 8.3 and 8.2.
Only 8.3.
Only 8.3, okay. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with 6.6, 8 point, and 8.3 pulled?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gilland.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
Item 6.1 is public review of recommended bridge supplemental instruction materials for seconds, secondary schools. Dr. Kaiser, would you?
Certainly. Good evening. We have on display our materials, the materials for Algebra II by Hooten Mifflin-Harcourt and Geometry by Hooten Mifflin-Harcourt, that we would like to have the public see that are being recommended for possible adoption next year for supplemental materials for these two courses. These materials would indeed bridge the Common Core lessons that teachers need to have to bridge from the CST style of teaching as we're entering and implementing the Common Core style of teaching, and those lessons that incorporate the language and the conceptual mathematics that are built into these materials.
And those parents and community members that are interested in Common Core and how it gets taught, and these supplemental materials can review that material here-
Yes, they can.
At the district office.
Yes, they are, they are in the lobby on display.
And if anyone has any problem finding them, they can talk to our receptionist at the front desk, and we'll be glad to help them with that.
Indeed.
All right. Moving on to item 6.6, approval of an extended field trip. Action is to approve extended field trip for MHS Kings and Queens robotic team to Oakland, California Convention Center to compete in the Western Super Regional Robotics Championship. Could I have a move, a moving second for that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any, anyone else want to comment?
Just congratulations and good luck.
I want to say congratulations and good luck, and the reason I pull this instead of just doing a by consent, which is the easy way, is I want to, I want to let people out there know that this funding for this is, is, depends on a fundraising effort. And so those that would like to help fund this robotics team to go compete and represent this community and this educational organization in the super regional, last year, this same team went to the Worlds, and it's so important that they go, and it's such a great honor. I hope that the community gets behind them and supports them. If you have any questions, call the high school or call here, and we'll certainly help connect you up. But the, there's a website called GoFund, GoFundMe.com, GoFundMe.com, and if you look on there for Monrovia's Kings and Queens robotic team, you can donate right online. So we hope the community gets behind that effort and helps these kids. We've approved the field trip. Now they're raising the money to go to that competition, and we want us, we want this community to support that effort. Any other comments on it? All right, we'll move on to item 7.5, the 2015-16 enrollment and staffing projections. Ms. Wu.
Yes, good evening. The 14, 15-16 enrollment and the staff projection is the first step for the district develop 15-16 budget. So in the past three years per current year, our district enrollment is not stable. So 12, 11, 12, 13, 14, our enrollment has increased. The 11, 12, we have, we gained 15 students. In 13, 14, including the CEOPA special education takeover, we total gained 41, but out of this 41, 31 belonged to the CEOPA students, so theoretically, general add, we increased 11. However, in 12, 13, we kind of lost 23 students, but this year, the first Wednesday of October, compared with last year, we declined 85 students. So when we use the projection method, normally we use the three-year weight. We changed our method because of the larger decline this year. We kind of put more weight to this year when we project next, next year. So being conservative, we project next year, we probably have 98, 98 kids less, but again, you know, hopefully, the due merging program we are launching in pre-month for change management program will help us to bump up the enrollment. And just for the information to the board, and the, right now, at the end of last, last week, I think we received along the 13 package, 11 package belonged to the K, and then two packages belonged to TK, which mean that the parents for this 13 family are interested in the due merging program, which is mandatory. So now, I let Dr. Jackson explain to the board how we project the staffing, because the staffing is, help us project the expenditure for next year, and enrollment help us project the revenue for, for next school year. So these are closely related for our budget.
So I'm simply just going to ask you to turn your attention to table two, with me focusing more so on table three, because between the HR department and the business department, we, we use table threes to ultimately support us in determining what our staffing needs will be. I want to say at, at the outset, that Monrovia Unified will not be issuing any reduction enforced notices, no RIF notices. We will not be laying teachers off. We, and that's due in part to some retirements, openings, and then teacher credentialing that's allowing us to potentially be able to shift staffing within the district, and we've been working closely with our MTA Association as well to ensure that we're following the contract to support our students. So with that said, on table three, I'd simply like to focus on first our K5. So K5 overall, we will be adding two teachers. I'd like to highlight where you see Brad Oaks and Mayflower respectively, 21 and potentially being down 25 students, and their staffing recommendations have them basically being the, being the same. Ultimately, what that means is that even though we're projecting 21 or 25 students to possibly be leaving, we, we believe that those 21 or 25 students don't necessarily occur in one grade level. So it could occur over the course of, the span of K5. Also, yeah, if you, if you just took it on average, it could be four students per, per grade level. So with the middle school, Clifton is projected to be down 31 students, so going from 24.8 in staffing down to 23.5, and Santa Fe potentially going down too. Now, keeping in mind that with Santa Fe, we know Santa Fe had somewhat of a cushion in potentially being overstaffed on what we might have projected last year, and so we basically, and working with David in, in the projections, we make up that difference this year. We wouldn't have started the year had students not show up and then gone to a teacher and said that we needed to lay you off at that point. Go ahead, Connie, if you want to interject.
Let the board know that our philosophy is when we do the staffing, we're rather conservative, because it's easy for us to add the staffing, then tell the staff that we give you insurance, now we don't have enough kids and you don't have enough work to do. So that's our philosophy, just to want to let board know.
Okay, and so then, keeping in mind, as I mentioned before, due to the ability to be able to shift staffing with available credentials out there, we're going to be able to seamlessly move people into these potential vacancies. And then the high school, Monrovia High School was slightly understaffed this year, thus we will be adding 1.7, so almost two teaching positions to meet their needs, and then Canyon Oaks, as you see reflected, they potentially could be down one staff member, but again, with potential openings at the high school level, teachers are able to move back and forth between Monrovia High School and Canyon Oaks as well. So relieving us of any need to, to RIF notice any of our teachers. Connie, do you want to say something?
Yes, just want to let board know that although our K to 8 grade, we declined, Monrovia High School from grade nine to 12, we actually gained students. So last school, the current school year compared with last school year, we actually gained 20 students. Our newly remodeled facility, as well as our athletic program, did attract a lot of students, especially those students graduated from the private middle school, and they come to our high school.
One other part, just as a part of our staffing process, David and I are actually on a caravan tour, if you will, around the district, so we're meeting with each site administrator to discuss their staffing, logistical issues, and then we'll be able to start having conversations with teachers that potentially may be affected if there is a need to move from one site to another within the grade level that they potentially are teaching at this time. So if I can, at this point, I'd just like to thank David for the time and effort that he toils to actually work behind the scenes to put this data together for us to ensure, along with Connie, that the district remains solvent and that we continue to support ultimately our students here in the district.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wu and Dr. Jackson. Moving back to item 6.6, the president neglected to take the vote, so there is a motion and second still on the table, and we probably should take that vote before we go any further.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
President Gilland.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
All right, item 7.6, second interim financial report for the 2014-15 school year, fiscal year. Ms. Wu.
Yes, good evening, board. We need Jason's magic touch. Board, as you know, that ed code required the district to self-certify our financial responsibility, whether we're able to meet or not at least twice a year. So back to December, we self-certified the positive certification for the first interim report, and the board approved, now it is the time for second interim report. The second interim report, the report cut of day is January 31st, which mean that the district will use actual revenue expenditure as the end, from Jan, July 1st to January 31st, and then project the rest of months for this school year. So again, we report to the board that we were self-certified positive certification, which mean that the district were able to meet our financial obligation for current school year as well as the next two years. As the board recall, that middle of January, Governor Jerry Brown released the 15-16 state budget, so therefore, there's a slight changes for the budget assumption in the second interim compared with the first interim. So here's the changes. For the cover, current fiscal year is the same, but the next fiscal year, there's a slight decline, which is the job 0.61, and then the 0.03% increase for the 16-17. And for the gap funding, current year, there's a changes, there's a slight drop, and there's a huge increase for 15-16. And part of the contribution for the huge change from the 7.9% gap funding to 32.19% is when we do the first interim report, we always use the more concerted projection. At that time, School Service California, their project gap funding percentage is lower than the local and the state, so that's why we use their projection. So again, right now, the change is for 15-16 is the increase from 7.9 to 32.19 as well as 16-17. So the current job gap funding will impact our revenue we received today, this year. So again, the ADA, we increase our projection for ADA for 25 ADA for this school year and 24 next two years. The reason is, when we report back to the first interim, at that time- The reason is when we report back to the first interim, at that time, we use the C-Bass Day, which is the enrollment on first Wednesday of October, that is the date the state will use called official enrollment day for school year. But again, body, you will know that, um, every day, the students can come in and leave the district. So enrollment will change on a daily basis. So the good news is on the C-Bass Day, also called Census Day, the comparison for the this school year versus last year, we are eighty-five students less. However, by the end of February twenty-eighth, which is last month, the same period comparison, the February twenty fifteen to compare with February twenty fourteen, our declined students only thirty-nine, which is less than, um, fifty percent compared with eighty-five. So because of this, we're going to re-project our P two ADA. So we feel confident that increase, although we're still conservative, but we will reach twenty-five student, uh, twenty-four five ADA more for this year. And then the next year's also projection, so once we have the accurate in enrollment for starting of school year, then we will adjust accordingly. So that is our current projection. For the undupated student count, which the students fill is three category, the free reduced meal students and the E.O. students foster use, la-, or the first interim report, we use the last year's percentage, which is sixty-two point one six. And this year, when we finish the application, the, the percentage of students qualified in free reduced meals, class, uh, slightly job compared with last year. So that the, as a result, the undupated count and job from, um, sixty-two point one six percent to sixty point one five percent. So this will impact slightly the funding for our supplemental concentration under the LCFF funding model. So the, the good news is, uh, right now, we receive additional money, which was not including in first interim, we receive three hundred thirty-two thousand dollar one-time mandatory, mandated cost for this year. And in governor's, um, budget, he projected he's going to budget in the state budget, hopefully this will be carried out in his may revise that he project that he will give this school district one, around one hundred eighty dollar per ADA. So for us, we project over a million dollars. So again, the ROP funding, uh, you know, um, the, the official notice is the legal will not, um, pass one million dollar starting next year to us. But I know Dr. Trusin and other, um, superintendent work very hard to persuade legal that need a soft in lending, which mean that still pass some money to, to the district and then gradually, um, stop this funding. But again, legally, legal don't have obligation give some money. It is the program changes its structure funding because of the state funding model changes. But again, you know, the impact to the district is, is, um, varies. Some is hard and some is not that hard, but it's all taken planning. So that is the, uh, revenue projection for this year and the next two year, oh, and the, I'm sorry, the revenue projection comparison for the first interim versus now what the changes. So, um, LCFF, you can tell that we're slightly, slightly down, um, around, um, um, close to one hundred thousand dollar. The reason is the natural fact because the gap funding percentage drop versus our increase our ADA projection. The federal income, the increase because we receive the, um, federal food service equipment grant, this is over a hundred thousand dollars. Accounting wise, the county require us to put that money in the general fund instead of the food fund. It's just accounting, um, you know, method, and we don't know why, but that's the way we have to do. Otherwise, we'll get error, error message from a report. So the state income, the increase of, uh, over three hundred thousand dollar contribute to the one-time mandated money we received at the second interim report. And the local revenue was slightly down, um, we look at our local revenue, including the rental and the lease and interest, we readjust our projection because it looks like we will get, um, less compared with our first interim projection. So that is our revenue projection. And expenditure, um, expenditure, um, beside, we already know the fact of impact for next two, uh, next two years. Current year, um, accepted the regu-, a regular adjustment, the, the, the change of the category. And the main change is compared with first interim is because ROP money is gone. So now, um, if the district continue operate the program, then general fund have to support that program. Okay, so that will be, we use the carryover from ROP exist program any from advance. So therefore, the first years contribution will be less and, and then gradually will be move back the, um, forecast of the program. Again, we already starting looking for the, um, operation cost for the program and we feel confident that, um, except the personnel, um, cost salary and the benefit, we feel confident that we have a room to, um, reduce the cost in the operation area. And again, the requirement for the facility set aside and the flexibility provisions gone, so we need to set aside three percent for next year and, uh, we increase the, the projection, uh, around twenty thousand dollars to move up to two hundred fifty to two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, again, um, the board know that, uh, the district starting the, um, conversation with association and for the, uh, negotiating settlement, because the, we have not reached agreement, it's just the progress discussion there, the, um, expenditure projection were not including any potential cost as a result in negotiation. So here's the, um, expenditure, um, prior, including the, um, unrestricted restrict and then the salary and the benefit is still within the, the frame, the, the average statewide, the salary and benefit between eighty percent to eighty-five percent, um, the district still within that range. And there, um, the, the, the books and supply around four percent and including taking into consideration our potential textbook need and the, the service and operations thirteen percent and the funeral renovation and, uh, and the, um, the, um, COP and it's, uh, it's our ongoing obligations, one percent and the contribution to other program, including the deferred maintenance, including the adult education, um, program and the additional cost for special ed is cost two percent. Uh, this is, is, um, almost identical, um, with the first interim report. So this is snapshot for multi-year projection and, um, again, um, we, we have the revenue and expenditure and, um, this year we projected, we still have deficit spending, which mean that, um, the cost for operate this district is more than the revenue we take. And, and then, um, because of the gap funding increase next year, we hope that, um, the, we will have surplus next year. And again, sixteen and seventeen year, because ongoing cost increase looks like we will, um, still have a deficit spending. So the unapproved, unassigned balance, um, at the third year, we have eighty-six thousand dollars. This already take into consideration that the county's guideline, that any increase for the fifteen sixteen sixteen seventeen, the gap funding, as, including the base and the supplemental concentration need to set aside. So we already set aside a million dollars for the two years, fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen. That is, um, beside the set aside, we still able to have eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, reserve at the end of the, um, sixteen and seventeens. So, um, once we settle negotiation, um, the district will prepare AV to, uh, AV twelve hundred and, um, we will request board approve for our report and submit to the county, that's a requirement. And then there, um, after that, we will revise our current budget as well as a multi-year projection and we are waiting for the governor's may revise, hopefully there's not surprise. And there, uh, we were working on the, on June, the, um, public hearing for both, um, LCFF and LCAP and then the board will, um, adopt, um, budget for fifteen sixteen at the second board meeting of June. So that will end my, um, presentation and any question from board?
Questions, comment?
I, I just have, I have a favor. Okay. Um, this is a pretty extensive piece of work. When is it prepared?
Um, it's, I think, um, when you say when prepare, um, the deadline, we need to submit to the county, um, by March fifteenth, so it, it is a long process. We, we starting, David probably starting months ago.
Okay, but when, when was this report compiled i- in its entirety?
Okay, um, before the board deadline, board agenda deadline.
It, it is, if one were wanting to
Mm-hmm.
go through this
Mm-hmm.
as a cure for insomnia,
Mm-hmm.
getting it on Friday night for voting on it on Tuesday is not enough time to digest this.
Okay.
Um, I would like to get this at least a week before we had to vote on it.
Okay.
Um, and I know we can't do anything about the past, but we can do something about the future. There is a lot of information in here, um, and I think it would behoove, I, I know that everybody takes their work very seriously. We need to be able to digest this seriously. And Friday night to Tues-, or Wednesday is just not enough time.
We will try our best.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept. We did not do that, but that's okay.
Oh. I second that. No.
You can't, you have to go through the kangaroo court on that one.
All right. We have a, uh, motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Any other discussion? Ms. Marikanda.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
President Gillland.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
All right then, we will move on to seven point nine and I will take a motion before we go any further for the E-rate interconnected voice over internet, uh, proposals and award of contract to select proposal.
So moved. Second.
All right, I will turn this over to Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, President Gillaland and board. On March second, we received proposal responses for our RFP that we flew at the beginning of February. And this evening, we're asking the board to approve the contract with Jive hosted voice services with Jive Communications. They were the lowest cost responsive provider by a significant margin.
Any questions?
I just have one question. When somebody is so far below, my question is, do we check out their bona fides to make sure they can render the service of which they said?
They are our current provider and, uh, one of the factors was that there was no changeover costs and, um, looking at the other responses, one was non-responsive. In other words, they didn't bid what was expected and the other one had a significant amount of new equipment that raised their costs substantially.
Thank you.
Uh, and to follow up, uh, I'm going to make the assumption that we don't have any existing issues with this particular company?
We
Let me answer that one. There is, uh, one issue that we would have with any company actually at this point and that is to make sure that the, our nine-one-one system, uh, calling system for any phone is accurate. We will be conducting a test with Jive in the next
Week.
Week to confirm that everything is accurate. Should that, uh, be successful, then, uh, I would have no issue with moving the contract forward. So if we were to approve pending successful implementation of the nine-one-one test, which we would be doing with, uh, MPD and, uh, Mr. Buchanan and I have already met with the representative from there.
Well, then I'll resend my motion and make a secondary motion that we accept Jive with the consideration that the nine-one-one system, um, operates to our satisfaction.
I accept that.
All right. Any discussion, questions? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
President Gillland.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Seven point one zero is E-rate internet connector, internet connections for all school proposal and award of contracts to Foothill Education and Technology Partnership could have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Buchanan.
Um, again, we, um, received two proposals for internet service and of the two proposals, the Foothills Educational Technology Partnership proposal was significantly less in cost and they're our current provider and based on the hundred thousand dollar differential per year, we're recommending to continue with that contract or to, um, enter a new contract for three years.
How many, we only had two people respond?
Um, within the approved window, yes, we did have another response come after the fact, but we, because it came outside of the
Window.
window, we can't, uh, review that. But that cost was also double the cost of, um, FETP.
And, and the procedure that we put this out to bid is the same as every other, uh, contract, there was nothing?
For the service, yes, this is standard, following standard procedure that all districts, um, follow within E-rate guidelines and, um, state purchasing law.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I want to have a, a series of questions here. Um, I have a serious problem with this company. I have a problem with its inception when it came to, um, to pass in two thousand and two, I think is when it was created. Um, uh, three years ago, um, when it was found, uh, that it was acting with less than integrity, um, uh, up to and including, uh, about two years ago when we had the lawyer that was then trying to untangle the mess that, um, Foothill Education Technology Partnership was, um, bound in. Um, there's been a, a numerous newspaper articles about this company that it's less than ethical. Um, and I find it troubling that even though they're the lowest provider, we kind of hold our nose and say, it's okay because now we're getting a good deal, when in the past, we were not only not getting a good deal, it was costing us a lot of money. And had we not found out that they were less than ethical, the, um, new structure as they have it would not be giving us our money back. Um, it, to me, it, this, the whole company in and of itself is kind of like the Corleone family and it's gone legitimate now, but it still doesn't make it that it was not a stand-up company to deal with at the beginning. Uh, it's a little bit like putting perfume on a pig to me. Um, that all being said, I have a question on the structure of the company now, but my first question is, what does it cost EdTech to provide the service to the, to the school district, the Monrovia Unified School District? What does it cost?
I don't know that I would have to, um, request that information from
And here's the reason why I'm asking that question. I believe that their structure is incorrect. I think the, if you go back to what I think was the intent, not the money-making scheme that went on, the original intent was that you had one service provider that had multiple, um, school districts being in the consortium and that they shared the expense. And I think the number of, I recall from two thousand and two, it cost about fifty thousand dollars to get the box to send the information out and they controlled the box. Well, i- in that case, the structure of the organization should have been a joint powers authority. And that way, it would have been seven school districts sharing the cost of fifty thousand dollars. At no time was there any structure that allowed that to participate. And in fact, I think that we were told we were getting a good deal at spending about thirty-five thousand because it was significantly less if we tried to go out and do it ourselves. Um, when in fact, if you're going to provide a great government service, which is what it should have been, is that the seven school districts should have been splitting the cost of the fifty-seven ways. Uh, so what I want to know is what does it cost to provide the service? Because I think that the only way I'll ever be comfortable with EdTech is then when it's put into a joint powers authority in a way from the structure that it currently resides. Um, I'd like to know if we can continue this item until our next board meeting, if we can get the answer to the question of what is it actually costing EdTech to provide the service? And then I, the next, the follow-up question to that is, how long would it take to create the joint powers authority that would actually be able to run it? We might be able to further, re-, further reduce our costs, um, not only for this contract, but for the rest of the contracts and the other partners that are in, there are school districts but for the rest of the contracts, and the other partners that are in, the other school districts, that we'd be able to reduce their costs to.
Uh, we...
The proposal is to table this until the next board meeting.
Yes.
And to get further information.
Perhaps we can have a, since it is on the agenda now, and why don't we put as many issues on the table at once? So hopefully, we can get a speedy resolution versus something that drags.
I, I don't, I don't have any intention of dragging this. What I, my intent to do is, I would like to see it become a JPA. I think the JPA is the structure that it should be. Um, I think the JPA will serve the school districts. More importantly, it will serve the people who are paying for it better than the current structure. It should have been that in 2002.
So you would like to see the information on what the cost and procedure would be that's to move to a JPA rather than a, this, this type contract?
A- a- and, and the answer to that is yes. And what I don't know, though, is if it costs $24,000, which I think is what the amount on the table is tonight, if it costs $24,000 for our share of it, because it's $24,000 times seven, because that's what it costs to run it, because now they, I think they have an employee, they have a, um, executive, uh, executive person that they have to pay for now. That was one of the solutions to, um, untangling the mess that it was, what a, a professional had to come in and run it. Oh, I also want to make sure, this, this is part of it. I want to make sure that anybody who had any connection to the previous structure, I can name names if you like, I'll just name one. If there is a Clint Taylor anywhere associated with this, I want to know it. I want to know if there's a Bob Geiger anywhere associated with this. Because if it is, then I'll have even more problems.
So that information on the joint powers agreement, and that would include, are the other districts involved, interested and willing and able? I'm not sure what their contracts look like. So would that be feasible to go with a JPA with the other districts that are involved?
We, we could get the information about the JPA. Certainly, we wouldn't go into a JPA between now and the 25th of March. Uh, and, and to answer the last question, there, there's nobody involved. Uh, none, none of the, neither of the individuals you mentioned are in any way associated with, uh, FETP.
So the other thing that I believe was asked for was the cost to EdTech of providing the service. And what our share of that cost would be if, considering the number of districts that are involved?
And I'll find that out.
Is there other items that we need to have brought back for our consideration?
I, I think there's other things we need to discuss. Uh, I, I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Hammond has said. You know, we, it's been well chronicled, the issues that this particular company had. But taking a step back from that for a second, I don't disagree at all with the, with the concept of, uh, a company that does a really poor job, you know, there, there's got to be some real justification why I would go back to them. Uh, if they were less than honest, I'm not gonna say dishonest, but they were less than honest in the way it was, it was put together. I, I do have an issue with that as well. A- and that aside, taking a step back in what we were asking for. So when we ask for a bid, or when we put bids out in general, you know, because once again, I want to make sure that we're doing things in a consistent manner, uh, and, and we don't draw any attention saying that we're, we're picking on any particular group, do we, or have we ever asked what a company's cost to produce something is?
Generally, no.
A- a- and that, that to me is, that to me is a problem, that we're, we're asking for specific information, meaning that if we're gonna ask EdTech for this, then I, I would think that we would have to ask the other provider for the same information. So, so this part is making me a little, uh, uneasy with that. I don't disagree that our job as a board is always to obtain the best service possible for the, for the lowest cost possible. Uh, and I don't disagree that the, the concept behind, uh, EdTech truly is what a, a joint, joint powers authority, what Mr. Hammond is referring to, um, should have been set up. I, I mean, it, there's a, there is a specific purpose for this, there's a specific, uh, group of people that was meant to serve, and it was clearly designed to reduce the costs and pass those benefits on to all the member schools, w- without a question. But, with that being said, those don't happen overnight. They just don't. And at the same time, we have a responsibility to provide services to, to our district in a timely manner and at the lowest cost possible. My biggest concerns are, uh, as Mr. Hammond has pointed out, I need to be comfortable that there is absolutely no overlap from the structure that we had problems with, from the players who were involved with where things are at today. I want to be comfortable with what the oversight is, so we don't have the problems that were previously discussed, and why they cannot happen today. At the same time, I want a, a contract, or I want an understanding that, their clients are currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if we know this information, but, but we might. Uh, if their existing clients are their original clients, whi- which were basically the same people that we would be asking to join into a JPA, is that, is that correct? Do, do we know what the answer to that question is?
The answer is actually, we have, they have expanded.
They have expanded.
They have expanded in order to further reduce cost. The more members, the lower the cost. And, and I'm gonna guess by three districts at this point, I'm not sure, but I could get a full list.
But their client base is still purely education, district-oriented. Um, o- okay, so at, at the same time, um, what I would like to know is, if, if we had a contract for, uh, I'm sorry, was, this contract was for 12 months, correct? Or three years, for three years? So, my feeling is, if we did this for 12 months, assuming all those other things were met, and within that 12 months, we then had an opportunity to sit down with all the other entities that, that would, we would be asking to form this JPA with, and see whether it, it's feasible to get it done. To me, that would be the best path, uh, because we don't know what the other groups want to do, honestly. A- and I, I always have, uh, concerns about basing our district's decisions on what other people are gonna do, or may want to do, or may not want to do. So, I think, at least in, in my opinion, at this point in time today, the best course is to take the least amount of time to, in order for us to get our services that we have to get, as long as it's met our minimum criteria, as Rob has cleared out, clearly laid out, no overlap of people. Everything that said was gonna be done and changed has been done and changed. And then at the same time, try to, um, work on the appropriate structure, as Rob has laid out again, uh, which would probably be the JPA, uh, or something very, very similar to it, meaning that there's a joint ownership, and if people want to, and we want to expand to lower cost, then you add members. Uh, school districts are, um, are involved in JPAs. I know we have them for insurance, and we have them for other, uh, costs that we try to lower. So, I, I think it is appropriate, since this is only schools that are using this. This is only districts that are using it. I mean, it meets the criteria of why we would want to put something together. And I think that is, I think that is the appropriate long-term solution. Uh, but in the short term, I, I would like to go forward, if we can, knowing that the problems that we've seen had been resolved, and there's no overhang from our previous discussions. And I don't know if, if Jason or, uh, Dr. Throzen, whether you have the comfort and confidence to say, "All of the issues this board has brought forward have been resolved completely." And I'm willing to put my name on that.
I, I am confident that the issues have been resolved. Uh, I am not su- as the RFP went out for a three-year RFP, approving less than that would probably mean we need to make sure that that is, like, as with any other company, that would work.
I, I would think if we're gonna talk about less than three-year, we're gonna talk on re-advertising. If we're gonna table this and bring it back by the end of the month, I believe we would still have time to re-advertise as a one-year contract and get it awarded by July 1st.
The issue we face is that we're, this, if we want to take advantage of the federal funding for this, we have to fly it for 28 days at a minimum. So it is actually longer than the California contract code requirement for flying a RFP. And we wouldn't be able to do that between now and the deadline closing for, um, the E-rate federal filing, which is the 27th of this month.
So were we to table it till the 25th, that's something we could do?
Well, well, hold, I, I, I'm sorry, let me, let me just finish the stop, because I, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So, so if we table this, and we re-fly this in, in any manner, then we are going to lose approximately how much money?
It's 70% is what the feds pay for this.
70%? So, so in the best-case scenario, if we do not use, if we do not use this company, our costs will go up 70%?
Well, what's the dollar amount?
For this contract, it's six, our costs will go up $16,000 approximately.
Total for the three years or per year?
Per year.
So $48,000 is the overall cost?
Right, that's based on the $24,000 a year cost. If we were to look at another provider that was a higher cost, then we would be absorbing whatever those costs at full cost would be. Whatever those, whatever the other response would be at full cost.
Ooh, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the losing bid, what was its annual cost?
$130,000.
Over, for three years?
A year, per, for three years.
And that was the one that had significant capital outlet at the very beginning because of equipment?
That's a different, that was a different contract. This one, um, that, there's not, that's part of the build-out cost would be that. And then there was a third party, there was a response from Verizon that was at, um, $5,000 a month, or, um, $60,000 a year. So about, uh, just over two times this. But we received that after the window.
Gotcha. I, I want to go back to my original question, because I want to know what they, what it costs to operate. And the reason I want to know what it costs to operate, and the reason why I think we have the right to know what it costs to operate, is that it is a pseudo-public agency as it is, because the superintendents of these districts sit on the board. That, they're voting on it. Uh, this isn't a, this isn't a company out there with a nebulous board that goes out and seeks out business. This was, this was set up, none of one of the problems, if you ask me, um, that it's the superintendents of the districts that sit and act as the board. And so, when they sit and act as the board, with all due respect to all the members, well, you, it's hard to tell me that you don't have a dog in the, in the, in the fight. You absolutely have a dog in the fight, because you're gonna be one recommending it to a board to do something with it. So you don't even come up with the idea, you recommend it. Um, it, it loses some of the checks and balances, and that's why I want to know what it costs to operate. And I think because it's a pseudo-public agency, you have an absolute right to know what it costs to operate, because it's a public agency, people that are running it.
Do, do we know if this is a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4), or, or what the corporate structure is?
My understanding is a 501(c)(3).
O- okay, e- each of these structures has reporting requirements and transparency requirements. So, th- this may be readily accessible. They may have to already make all of this public. The, the only question is whether it's going to be to the standards that you're hoping to see, and I don't know.
Here's the thing, I know, they can, I don't know when they have the meeting, but it goes back. The board wants to know what it costs to operate EdTech. That's what I want to know. Because it's the cost of operating EdTech, we should theoretically pay, if it's seven members, one-seventh of it. It shouldn't be really much more, because whatever it costs to operate with all of its fees and paying its legal bills, which it has to do as a normal entity, um, all of its filing fees, at the end of the day, it's supposed to have zero money at the end. So if it costs $100 to run EdTech, then it's $100 divided by seven is what we should be paying. I don't know that this is necessarily a good deal. It sounds like a good deal when I compare it to something else, but I don't know what I'm comparing it to, because I don't know what it costs, and since it's a pseudo-public agency, I should know. If, it may be that $24,000 a year is the absolute steal of the century. EdTech is the greatest thing since sliced bread, and, you know, then we go skipping down the Yellow Brick Road to the Land of Oz, and life is good. I want to know that. All I know from the past on EdTech has been anything but the skipping down the road to the Land of Oz. And I want to do that before I vote on it.
I, I don't think there's any disagreement, that we, we've had some, some issues in the past. You know, to, to, to me, uh, value is, is one of those terms. It's, it's kind of like when you sell your house, and people say, "What's your house worth?" You know, it, it's worth whatever somebody buys it for. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. And, and right now, I have two services in front of me, and I, and I need this service. One costs $100,000, and the other is costing 24, and I've been assured, and I've been assured that the services are comparable and that there are no issues that we've already outlined. Now, is, is that 24 the best price that we can get? Maybe, maybe not. Is it the price we should be paying? Maybe, maybe not, but that, that's why I think that exploring what you're laying out is, is the path that we're gonna end up taking regardless, which is to say, this, your structure might be better suited as a JPA than any other corporate structure. But in the meantime, since we have a lot of cash on the table, i- if, if I'm being assured by the, the staff that I trust, uh, that our ethic issues, our business practice issues, um, the structure issues have been resolved, I, I'm okay to give them the nod to say, "A- all right, you know, that's what we pay you for. If you're, if you're putting your name on it, that it's, it's done. That's all I can ask for." That doesn't mean that I'm happy with this, with what we have, and that we shouldn't pursue what, what you're saying and go down that path, because I agree, that's, that's the appropriate structure. But at the same time, I, I'm, I just want to make sure we don't, uh, we don't lose a, a 70% of our, of our funding, to say, I, I, on the flip side, in order to make this wash, their billing of $24,000 would have to be off by 70% to make the prac, to, to make the, the, this, uh, exercise worthwhile, and maybe it is, I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know that for sure, and let, and let me just, and let me go back to the original question, which is, how much does it cost to operate?
True.
Because when I find out what it costs, and when we find out what it costs to operate, and we find out that it costs to operate $24,000 and some change, then we're actually getting a fair nod from a pseudo-public agency. I think it's, that's a fair, that's fair, okay? And I'm sure it will come with the, uh, with all the things that can, um, stipulate how they got to the $24,000 with the cost, okay? I mean, I'm assuming that. Um, this isn't just gonna be someone say, "Hey, yeah, go put this number on a piece of paper, deliver it to them, it'll be okay." So I'm sure it's gonna have what it needs to support the, the evidence will support what it's gonna suggest. But then we'll know, we'll know the EdTech, I will know that EdTech has turned a corner that heretofore I don't know that they've turned that corner. All I know is, you know, this is a company that I've had an issue with for three years, that at every turn, um, has been l- less than desirable. And here they are again for a three-year deal for, from us. And I'm saying, "I just want to know what it costs to operate. Let me see that." And when I can see that and we're getting a fair shake, I will say that will be the first time we got a fair shake out of the dick gate from ed tech and it might help to stem some of the bile that I hold for this company. I make no mistake about it, I do not like this company.
If, if we table this to, to the next meeting, will it have any impact?
The next meeting is before the deadline, so we can definitely get all that information and approve.
Then I see no reason why, if we can get this, I mean, because the bottom line is, when we put our names down on this, I, I don't think any of us do this lightly. I think all the concerns Rob has, has mentioned are all legitimate. I don't think anybody can question the concerns and problems we've had with them in the past. And for peace of mind, not only for the entire board, but for the community as well, I, I don't see a, I don't see a problem with it.
So we've got, I believe, two pieces of information that we've definitely set out that we want to come back for the next board meeting, and that's what is the cost of operating for ed tech? And...
Well, I...
What was the other one? There was one other thing.
How long, if, could it go into a JPA?
JPA process, yes.
And this is from my point of view, and I want to make sure that folks understand this, the board, is that I'm not asking for a JPA in two weeks. That's, that's impossible and I do not intend that. I would like that, I might even make it a piece of a motion that at the earliest possibility to go into a JPA, I would vote, I would structure my vote cannot, it would be on contingent probably on going in that path. It would not block it from happening. I'm, I'm not an obstructionist. I, I just want to know, A, what it costs to, what their cost of doing business is, and we have a right to know that because it's a pseudo-public agency. It's staffed, for goodness sakes, from people who have hired, who are public employees that have hired their staff. So it's no, really no different than, and it's an extension of the school district because it's the school district paid staff hiring the staff. So I don't think that's an issue. We should be able to know pretty close what it costs to operate ed tech. We'll see what their cost of operation is, how it fares with what we're being asked to pay. And I would probably ask for a parallel course that takes us down the path to a JPA. Ultimately, I think that fixes the problem much better than what it sits right now.
And so you're gonna bring us the information on what the process to develop a JPA and if there's any interest from the other districts that are involved in developing a JPA? And then if we see that it's possible over the next three years, we could, we could approve a contract at the next board meeting with the caveat that in the following three years, we will, we will be pursuing a JPA. I mean, that would be one course of action.
I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and I'm okay with the, the cart there, but I think our representative to ed tech needs to go and speak, if I'm, if I'm correct in hearing what I hear, that the board agrees with me that that's a path that we should take, is that, that our representative would go to that meeting and say, "Hey, look, the, the board at MUSD thinks we ought to go in this direction, what do you guys think?" And then they take it back to their folks. I, I'm not asking for, you know, the parting of the Red Sea. Get the dialogue started. I don't know that anybody ever said anything about ed tech until three years ago. It was pretty quiet. And I think it was Mr. Buchanan that saw an irregularity when he first got here that raised a huge red flag for him. And so, and I don't know that anybody prior to him saw any irregularity to it. And so just because it's quiet doesn't mean that there isn't something wrong going on. It just means that no one spoke about it. Well, once the, you can't go backwards once you've said it's no good. And it would seem very irregular if particularly me to sit here and just say, "Yeah, it's okay now." I don't think it's, I don't know that it's okay, and I want to be double, double sure it's okay.
And I believe when that came up was when you came to work here and discovered what we had, the, the can of worms that had developed.
Yes, that's correct.
Was that three years ago, four years ago, whatever that?
It started about four years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
And it all came out over a, the last, the third year, the year of the third year, three years ago.
Yeah, and the district personnel worked very hard to unscramble that can and get to the point we are. And our representative to that board, I believe, has satisfied that. So if you can bring that information, hopefully the board can be satisfied. Is there anything else that we need brought back for this item at the next meeting? Hearing none, if I have agreement from everyone, we'll table this until the next meeting. You okay with that, Mr. Williams? Okay? You okay with tabling it? Okay. Then we will table item 7.10 and move on to item 7.11, E-Rate Basic Maintenance of Network Equipment Proposal and Award of Contract Disallowed Proposal, Mr. Buchanan.
Yes, we are...
Oh, wait, I need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
You want a motion?
Well, I had a motion and I didn't get a vote, but we need another motion. So now, Mr. Buchanan, we can discuss this.
Yes, we are asking the board to approve a contract for basic maintenance for network equipment from NIC Partners for a three-year period. This will extend the warranty on some of our core network equipment. This is something we've done every year. This year I decided to look at a three-year contract to see if I could further reduce costs and not have to bring this back every year.
And did you?
We flew an RFP, it closed March 2nd. We reviewed, we received only one proposal. This is in line with cost estimates that I've found other places and in line with the costs we paid last year on a one-year. So it, it makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gillan.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
All right, item 7.12, E-Rate Mobile Device Proposal and Award of Contract.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Buchanan.
If we're recommending, or we're requesting the board approve the use of the Western States Alliance contracting, contract to purchase mobile services from T-Mobile for replacing our mobile phone telephone services. After reviewing and looking at or testing out different systems, we feel that T-Mobile provides better service within the district than our current provider, who I don't want to name, and at a significantly lower month-to-month cost.
Any comments or questions?
You've tested, you've tested these phones?
Yes, we brought the phones in and my team carried them around and we shared them with other members of the staff and cabinet to test them at various locations.
Because there's nothing worse than having a cellphone in dead spots.
And one of the bonuses of this is that it will connect with your Wi-Fi. So I've, I've hung up on each of you from home unintentionally and because my whole...
She's been blaming that on cell service.
I will no longer have an excuse because I have wireless.
Can't blame it on that anymore.
Yeah, and I did, Dr. Throsen is correct, that's one of the ser, that's one of the additional features of this service that isn't comparable to the other services, is the ability to route calls over Wi-Fi, which I think will significantly enhance our service within the district now that we have Wi-Fi throughout the district and also when people are home at their Wi-Fi.
Great.
All right. Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
President Gillan.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
Item 7.13, E-Rate Managed Internet Broadband Service Proposal and Award of Contract. Could I have a motion?
Second.
All right, Mr. Buchanan.
Again, we had, flew an RFP. This is a new class of service from the E-Rate. And so we flew a RFP for 28 days and received response, we received one response on March 2nd. And so I'm asking the board to approve a contract contingent on receiving E-Rate funding because I want to see how that'll work. And what this service allows to do is actually extend that, it's similar to the basic maintenance and, but it, what it does allows extend that support to all the devices on our network related to Wi-Fi and the switches. So we'll have additional help if there is a problem with a switch, including management and code upgrades, which we currently are managing ourselves, but this would provide additional services and have the SLD, the E-Rate, pay for 70% of that portion of those costs.
And what are we estimating our remaining 30% to be?
For this, this is a one-year contract and... Sorry, I have that right. We're estimating our, the E-Rate will cover 29, $30,000 of that, so our costs will be $12,000.
$12,000, and approximately, how much would you guess without this contract we currently spend?
We current, we, that's a difficult one to estimate because honestly, we allow some of these things to go for quite some time because it, just based on need of replacement. And so we're not doing, we don't have a, we have a scheduled maintenance, but it's only when funding is available. Oh, did I get the wrong one? I'm sorry, it's 7:13, I gave you the wrong number. The number is, E-Rate will cover $17,000, so our costs would be $7,000.
Approximately $7,000 is what our costs will be. And over the last 12 months, how much would you estimate we've spent on this particular service?
About $4,000.
About $4,000. So if in the last 12 months we've spent $4,000, this contract is now gonna have us spend $7,000, how, how is this good for us?
This, well, there's things that this does that, for example, the code upgrades for the switches that we haven't been practicing.
So, so you're saying this is gonna take care of some deferred work that needs to be done?
Correct.
And if we were to pay to have all of this work done without this contract, how much would that cost? This is the first year, I mean, I want to get to the bottom line, which is if this is the first year we've had this contract, I want to know what the cost benefits are. Is this something that we need to have or is this something we want to have because we can?
Now, from a deferred, we would be looking at about another $4,000, so it would be about eight, so it's about in line with what our costs would be to do this, but we've been deferring some of those costs because of budget.
Okay, I, I guess I'm getting lost here. I mean, if, if the costs are gonna be the same, then what is this additional 70% that the E-Rate is picking up?
That's, again, there's...
I, I mean, just so you understand, maybe I'm, I'm making this confusing. If, if this entire contract with, with E-Rate is, was, how much, $17,000?
$24,000.
$24,000. I would expect that we're spending $24,000 to do this work currently and that the reason we're joining this is to reduce our costs or to free up man service or to take care of $24,000 of deferred maintenance that we haven't been able to do. But if cleaning up our deferred maintenance and the other coding would only cost us a grand total of $7,000, where is the other $17,000 of expenses going to?
I would propose we table this and let Mr. Buchanan have a chance to get some numbers together for us because...
Is there a time issue?
One thing that was said was that we're only spending $4,000 because we don't have the funding to spend the $8,000 that needs to be spent, but we do have the $7,000 to pay for this. So my preference, unless there's a, you know, a critical time issue with, is that, that we table this and let you put some numbers together based on some research instead of just what you think sitting here.
We have time to, we can bring this back at the next board meeting.
And, and that report will include the staff time that will be released, so you'll have to do a cost estimate because Mr. Wong's point is absolutely correct. It will free up staff time as well so that they could, and staff time is not paid for out of E-Rate while this would be. So it's staff time that we would currently spend on services that we currently provide that we pay for out of our general fund. But I know that Mr. Buchanan can probably get together a list of items and get us a better budget of savings because it is clear there will be savings, but the manner in which it was presented didn't necessarily outline it in as clear a manner as possible.
Since this is not a time, time-sensitive thing, I would suggest...
Absolutely.
Tableting it?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, everyone okay with tabling it? Okay. Look forward to that being on the next agenda too.
Thank you.
You're welcome and thank you for all that you do to put together all these contracts and, and, and there's a significant amount of E-Rate funding here. We're able to do so many things that we couldn't if that, if, if we didn't follow proper procedures to get the E-Rate funding, so thank you for that. All right, then we will move on to 8.3, Staff Analysis Position Control Report, Mr. Jackson.
Board President Gillan, I'd simply like to amend Agenda Item 8.3 to correct one particular error that appeared, it was a typo. The original document under Wild Rose District Regular Classroom Projections for 2015, 2016, the previous document read 29 teachers were projected at Wild Rose and it's actually 19. So the actual for this year is 18, we're projecting an increase of one, not an increase of 11, which is in line with 7.5.
And we're not issuing any layoff notices?
Correct.
I don't believe this requires a motion and vote, it's just a receiving the report. All right, anything else on 8.3? All right, then we will move on to 9.2, Resolution in Support of College Career Access Pathway Act.
Second.
All right, Dr. Throsen.
Thank you, President Gillan. This resolution calls upon members of the California Senate and Assembly to approve the college and career access pathways, which relies on concurrent enrollment and approves for concurrent enrollment and partnerships between school districts and community colleges. It's something that, it's an avenue we'd like to promote a little bit further within our district to create additional opportunities for our own students.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you were gonna ask a question. I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask the question and, and I believe this really expands our opportunities to cooperate and coordinate with Citrus College, is that?
That it does.
All right, any other comments or questions? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gillan.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
All right, item 9.3, Pending Board Issues, Dr. Throsen.
I would just like to call attention to the, the first one, seismic retrofitting on building O should be done within the next month, and I look forward to permanently removing this item from the pending items issue.
And we'll be one step closer to removing the whole bond. All right, thank you. Item 10.1, under Old Business, next regular board meetings, we have at the meeting on the 25th, that'll have those two tabled items, and we have two meetings in April, the 15th and the 29th, two in May, the 13th and 27th, plus we have an additional meeting in May 19th where we and the Personnel Commission will recognize a classified employee of the year.
And President Gillan, I'd like to make a comment under Old Business, if I may.
Sure.
I want to, it was a focus of this five-member board that RIF notices, also known as layoff notices, that is required by the state to be functioned before the 15th of March, that it was, this board's wish is not to unduly burden anybody in our district ever again unless absolutely necessary with the uncertainty of whether you were going to have a job or not. Recognizing that the people who work in our district have families to take care of, providing shelter, food, and clothing for their families and themselves. And folks that go to work and do a good job should have the satisfaction of knowing that if they're doing a good job, that they should be able to have their employment. When Kathy was hired, Dr. Throsen was hired, we, we had that conversation about how important it was to the board that this not happen. Dr. Throsen took that very seriously, and in fact, that was her feeling as well, is not to overly burden our staff with the uncertainty of what their employment may be. And this year, when not one RIF notice is going out, I want to thank you, Dr. Throsen... I want to thank you, Dr. Throsen, for living up to what you said you were going to do when you got hired as to not unduly burden, um, our staff with the uncertainty. If you're doing a good job, you should be able to keep your job. And, and I don't know if folks know how big a deal that is, but if you can imagine going to work with something hanging over your head that you may or may not, uh, have your job in the future, but you're expected to still keep your shoulder to the wheel and doing a good job because you still have three and a half more months of work to do before you're let go, it would be a horrible situation for people to have to endure. So thank you very much for not allowing anyone in to endure that here. And I really appreciate the board, and, uh, and I appreciate working with a board that sees that as a huge benefit.
And I was just listening today to the number that LS, L, LA Unified is going to issue notices to, and it just, uh, yeah, it's something that happened in the past that I had my comments to, Rob. Thank you for living up to that. All right, anything else under Old Business? New business, we have several dates that, uh, parent-teacher conferences are coming up. We have Caesar Chavez Day on March twenty-seventh, and all sites will be closed, and then going right into the following week for spring break, uh, March twenty-seventh through April third. Uh, Strategic Planning Committee meetings on the twenty-fourth, April eighth and fourteenth. Want, uh, to include Thursday, March the twelfth on our calendar. That's the date that we host, uh, Monrovia Chamber Business Mixer at this office and have a taste, a culinary tour of Monrovia schools. Uh, the chamber loved it so much, and the members, uh, got a sample of each of our, uh, schools, uh, cuisine. And they will have that opportunity again this year. So we hope for an even larger turnout this year than the one we hosted, uh, last year. So that date is March twelfth. Open house events are coming up at our high schools and middle schools. Also, uh, there will be, uh, Mayflower and Brad Oaks Elementary Schools still have their open houses left to do, and those dates are, are listed here. And then our awards dinner for PTA will be April ninth at the Senna Restaurant. Uh, is there anything else under calendar, new business? Hearing nothing, we will adjourn the regular board meeting at nine forty-four.